Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the North Saniam Sewer Authority Work Session. I don't have the number recorded, but I'd say around four. It's July 17, 2021, and it's 6:29 PM. The meeting's held by Zoom. Roll call.
Ken Woodward.
Here.
Shelley Ingle.
Here.
Joel Parks.
Here.
Dale Leacy.
Dale.
Okay, so your interment at the RV Park is really wacky today. We'll take, we'll take that as a here, okay? Thank you. Tim Kirsch.
I'm here.
So we are missing Jeff. Yui and Jeff Smith.
Did you get Joe Parks?
Yes, I got Joel.
Yeah.
I got you, didn't I?
Jeff, Jeff Smith is definitely not gonna be able to attend today.
No. Okay. Declaration of Conflict of Interests? I hear none. Announcements? I hear none. Public comments and questions, please, will be limited to three minutes each.
Hey, Ken, in a work session, you don't have to do any of, for the work session, you don't have to do any of that.
Well, I'm making this up as I go.
Okay, well, and I'm sorry, I didn't give an agenda.
Oh, hey, no, I, hey, I'm supposed to know this.
Yep, that's okay.
That's all right. So, I'm gonna turn it over to Danielle.
Yeah, just, thank you. Well, it's a topic of discussion, so we received a, a-page letter from Orenco, and I received 12 pages of responses from John McCormick.
Did everybody get that?
Is that the email that Danielle forwarded to us?
Yes.
It's six pages, or did you say 12?
Mine's 12 because there was a, there was a couple of different responses.
Okay, okay.
I just wanna make sure that, and I appreciate everybody coming together so quickly. Orenco, their letter, I didn't, I don't know, I don't think I shared that one, it was.
I did.
Okay, good. Yeah, Shelley, do you have something?
I got it.
Okay, you got it. So, I just really wanted to come together and see what the board's desire is. Is there a desire to reevaluate? Is there a desire to talk about how we're gonna handle these things in the community? Is there a desire to? That's why I asked for, yeah, our engineer to not be on this call today. So, I'm just hoping that we can have a discussion of, of what you guys want me to do, and what the boards of, if, we can't make any official decision, I just need some guidance on what I need to be doing.
It's, someone just started. We'll speak one at a time. Shelley.
Oh, I was gonna say you go first. So, I read the Orenco letter, I read the world's longest email from John McCormick, and, and Danielle, I read your response to Orenco, as well as hearing your responses to John's questions last night, which, by the way, were superlative. Just really did a great job of answering, of addressing his questions, we'll put it that way, of addressing his questions. So, I think your response to Orenco, that "stop trying to sell us stuff" is appropriate, and your answers to John McCormick, I think you're done. I think we're done. Sometimes, when you get no attention, you just finally fade away. If, if we are worried about some sort of odd litigation or something, then obviously we have to do something else. But I, I'm not aware of anything like that, that that's come up, or that's, that is in the offing. And if, if my interpretation of what I have read is correct, then I don't think that we need to do anything.
So, I'd say, let me throw this out there, the only concern I have is if, if John is accurate, that the O&M costs that are being provided to us from, from Keller are so far off that we should reevaluate, that's my only concern, and I don't have certainly the expertise to know that. Orenco is a, is a type of product, it is a type of step system. So, even if, it almost goes two directions, right? You have a gravity system and you have a step system.
Right.
If, if you guys go with the step system, then you can kind of look through all of the different options. I am just worried about, I'm worried about the pressure points, and I don't wanna give a, a vendor the opportunity to virtually create their own, their own market. So, those are just all of my concerns. I don't think there's any legal concerns or anything like that here. But there, you know, if John's, tell everybody that you guys are going with a very expensive thing, there's a lot of heat that you're gonna also feel in the communities, and I don't want necessarily to not be prepared if that's the case. So, that's all I need to say on that one.
No, thank you. So, I was, I was, how do I say this? I misinterpreted the information. I thought Orenco was the company and they provide a system.
They are a vendor, they would be a potential vendor. They have a specific type of step system that's, they, they argue is unique, and that it's not the traditional one, and because of that, the cost is much less.
I understand, thank you. Yeah, good.
Janet.
Um, Danielle, you did, Danielle, you did a great job last night in the, the responses and as well as the response to them. I also have a, an issue with Orenco trying to create their own market. This is something that, that the state's dealing with, with one of our vendors, with the health authority. Is there a way we can do that investigation without feeding into the the conversation from Mr. McCormick and from Orenco to see if there is a difference? I think, I agree with you, if, if it is cheaper, we need to investigate it. But I really think the, the board's done due diligence, and I really think that, that Keller has done a lot of good work. Also, so I think, I think we're on the right path. I think we're doing a great job. You're doing an awesome job. But if we're gonna check it out, we need to check it out in such a way that Orenco and John don't get their fingers into what we're doing and try to sway it.
The only way to actually get a, like, official amount would be to be working with Orenco on their systems. So, that's, that's the only way I know to do that, and that's the only way Keller would know to do that.
I don't think we should do that personally.
Joel.
Yeah. I am, I actually think we should look into the other systems. I, I think it's worth, you know, giving them a shot to explain what they, what they have, and if they can save us money. I don't know anything about step systems, so when they suggest a gravity, I figured they had our best intentions, so. I, I wanna hear either Orenco or another company like that.
Okay.
And Danielle, I, I don't think I got the Orenco letter. If you can send it to me.
Yeah, I think, I sent, I sent everything out this morning. If you didn't get it, send it again.
All right, thank you.
Tim.
Well, now, let's see here. Yes, I thought last night's presentation was done very well. Obviously, it was centered around the gravity system. I believe, though, that at our July 1 meeting, that I don't think Peter was pushing us towards one way or another. In fact, I think he tried very hard to stay neutral. That's why I asked the question of both Keller and, and actually to Keith. Thoughts on it? They did both have a preference to, to the gravity system in our situation. Now, I did go and I called my friend Jeff Cruthers, who is with the OAWU, and asked him his opinion on it as well. And while he said that the step systems, and he's worked with a number of them, are good systems, they have their place. You know, Mill City has the Steg system, basically, and it's worked well. There have been some costs and some maintenance stuff that issues, but it's, you know, 25 years old. However, we did get, start having problems, you know, 10 or 15 years ago, actually, so. With that, I think Jeff Cruthers, like I said.
Where'd you go?
I think he's driving. So, he's probably up at that blind spot down by Phillips Hill.
Salem Hill.
Yeah, either that or Phillips.
I don't know. We might save money on, a little bit on the front end, but does that come out to the back end? I don't know. When Keller presents his, their numbers to us, they are, I believe, giving us numbers that would be like, you know, this is what it could cost. Orenco, obviously, is going to say, well, the best-case scenarios for the cost. So, I think we gotta weigh those factors into it. So, I'm, after consulting with my friend Jeff at OAWU, as well as listening to what Heath had to say, I'm fine with going towards the gravity system. I don't know that we've actually, or even Keller has decided actually what they're gonna do with gates, whether it's one way or another, they're looking for our direction on it, obviously. So, I'm, I'm comfortable with the gravity system. I really am. I believe that the, the, the OAWU is going to be the professionals that work with these systems, and they work with them all over the place. They work with both styles and many different kinds of step systems. So, they know their stuff, and so I'm comfortable with their recommendations, I do believe. So, I guess that's kind of where I am.
Thank you. Dale. You there, Dale?
I think he may be typing. I see, yep, that just came up on the chat.
All right, um, are you there, Dale? Hey, Dale, I'm gonna go ahead and speak. Go ahead and interrupt me when you get on there. I wanna make sure that we haven't lost our direction. In the very beginning of the, when we all started meeting, Danielle presented to us CPI, internet, high-speed internet, fiber optic lines, however you wanna say it. But if you dig one trench, you get to put three things in there. So, you're digging a trench for gravity. And you, you have options, what you can do. So, you can put, you put the gravity, you can put the electrical and the high-speed internet. If you, if you take a pressurized system, and I'm no engineer, and you wanna dig a trench or bore whatever, let's say you bore holes, you get one hole for sewer, one hole for electrical, and one hole for a high-speed internet. If you dig a small trench, three feet deep, it's gonna have to be a lot deeper to get all three of those in. We talked about this in the very beginning, and we wanted to work with CPI and Zipley, and have them help with the construction cost. I don't know where that stands now. I don't.
I think, so if I can just tell you where that stands really quickly, they're gonna be able to do that independently well before we'll be able to get in there.
Okay. So, my argument, go ahead, Shelley.
Don't we already have Zipley now? I mean, Detroit has Zipley, it's in the ground, it's here.
All the way through the whole city?
Yeah.
Not up at my place, and they won't return my phone calls.
They don't, they don't have it up there because the trees aren't done yet.
So, we made a decision. No, we didn't vote, but we made a decision to have Keller look at gravity. In Detroit, I'm just speaking for Detroit, we have more hills than flatland. And you're not in, you have more hills than flatland. You're not going down 15, 20 feet on a hill. You're not gonna do it. So, to me, with, and I, I listened to Shelley, when she made her comment about electrical, the canyon loses electricity quite often. I only know of, I think, two people up in Detroit, just speaking for Detroit, that have generators.
If, I know, I don't wanna put that pressure on other people. I know of that for sure.
No. So, I'm just saying, we've just made a decision to have Keller look at the gravity system. There's no moving parts, except for the lift stations. Other than that, and, and that's about it. I wanna get, I wanna get Dale in there before he has to go to his.
Yeah, he just texted, he just sent a message. It says, "I favor at least to hear out what detailed step could provide, especially on the O&M." The other consideration with gravity is that it's not been discussed as the effect it could have on Gates' water system. Says, "We already have large maintenance issues with lines failing and reconstruction, followed with heavy equipment excavating for gravity. I fear the consequences of the Gates' water system would be significant, and what or where that leaves Gates, if has a heavy excavation is, is detrimental on the Gates' water system. How will Gates fund such a large project like that?" That's a, that's a point we're gonna have to look at. At least on the Gates' water side. I think that's gonna even have to be part of the engineering discussions.
Thank you, Dale.
So, excuse me, so, a question. We've directed Keller to take a look at gravity systems and how they work for us. This isn't a decision to quote-unquote "buy the systems," correct?
That's correct.
Correct.
So, we're still very much in investigative, investigative state. I can speak English, just not today. So, I, I guess I'm not understanding, other than somebody's throwing a tantrum, why this has become such a big issue? How, how it got the letters, the six-page letters and so forth. I guess I'm not understanding, not, not needing an answer, okay? Just a statement, because we're not, we're not buying the system, we're not putting it in the ground, we're still investigating.
And, and Jan, I can actually really explain that, I think, pretty easily. If we, if we go a gravity system, Orenco's off the potential vendor list. That's, that's what it comes down to, right? And it's only because they don't have the product that serves the regular gravity system. They have a step product called a prelos, which then feeds into a sewer system. And that's what they've been kind of pushing pretty hard, and, you know, that's not uncommon when you're out, you know, right before you go out for bid, right? So, that's the reason, is because if it's in the master plan to go that direction, it would potentially eliminate them as a vendor.
Awesome, thank you.
And the second piece is, is that, and, and I think this is, this is my caution, of course, is if everybody's saying that, that the O&M cost that Keller has provided for us is way higher than, say, an Orenco system would be, you know, I think there's some, we wanna make sure that we're doing the very best for the communities and what that looks like.
Thank you.
Yep. And then, we have another thing from Dale. Another question, "If gates is a gravity solid waste, how will it tie into the Mill City system designed for effluent only?" Okay, I can answer that one, Dale. The, they would have to actually redo the Bill Sisti, Cities system to be able to accept it, and they would have to also get additional drain field area. And, okay, so then, to not plug Mill City's plumbing, what they would actually do is have a direct line from the Gates' side, because they would have a completely different, if they, if, if it goes the way it was talked about last night, it would be a completely different piping into a system that would then put it together after it's already been piped in to the, to the treatment plant.
That would be a new treatment plant that they're discussing. Is that correct, Tim?
Yes.
Come on, Tim.
From what I understood, yes, they're planning on rebuilding the Mill City Treatment Processing Plant completely anyway. They're gonna put in a, a new set, a plant 100%, and then decommission the old one anyway. So, that's not gonna matter one way or another. And quite honestly, you know, being, gone through a few different projects, it doesn't matter which way we go, there will be people that are in opposition to the direction that we go. There were plenty of critics against the step system when they first put it in in Mill City. And we, but we ended up going with what was gonna be most, I, I wanna say the best value at the time and, and give us the best service, so. And also be compliant with the Three Basin Rule. Now, from what I understand with talking with Peter, they, you know, they, they changed some of the, 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 the rule to make it more strict and stringent for the Three Basin Rule, actually, even, what, in, in 95 or something, he said, they, they revamped the whole rule a little bit. Anyway, like I say, it doesn't matter which way we go, we're gonna have some opposition. There's no way 100% of the people are gonna be happy with 100% of our decisions. So, we gotta be able to defend our decisions, obviously. But, that doesn't, and we wanna be able to listen to people that have their opinions, and people always feel like they need to be heard, so we wanna listen to and hear John and understand him, and be able to answer his questions with the reasonable answers. As far as Orenco goes, you know, I, the whole email was from their sales manager, and his job is to push for the sale. If, if they really had some sort of thing where we would have been slanderous or whatever, it would have been their attorney writing the mail, not, not their sales manager. So, I, I think that the comments that I got back after, I wanna say, talking with Jeff and with Heath, that they didn't see anything wrong with the way we made our decision either. So, I'm, I'm good with it. If, yes, if the, if the Orenco system was gonna be a much better value and still have a product that's gonna be, that's gonna work well for us, but I would say it'd have to be, they'd have to prove its superiority as well. So, I don't know. I'm, like I say, I, I'm comfortable with the, the gravity system. I don't think the, the OAWU's gonna steer us wrong in that regard. They, you know, they have their, their expertise in working with all these different systems throughout the whole state, and, and they very plainly said to me that they thought that the gravity was gonna be the best one for our particular area. I'm not worried about a little bit of heat coming from people that.
I know. I wanna make sure, though, that everybody feels comfortable that they can defend that, too.
Right. Exactly. We just need to be able to defend our decision.
So, it, this is what I'm seeing. I'm seeing that half of you guys are wanting to get, dig in a little bit more, and half are ready to move, to, ready just to kind of put this behind us. So, I'm gonna need some guidance on what you want me to do. Do you want me to invite Orenco for a presentation? Do you want me to ask Peter to meet again with Orenco?
That's gonna be difficult. I know, I don't appreciate the letter.
No, I didn't appreciate it at all either.
I mean, they accused, they attacked, and no, that's not professional at all.
My response is that I, I don't think that they, they took seriously the decision you guys made and how hard, you know, and how, how your decision was made, right?
No. I mean, Colin, I, man, I'm not gonna get into the letter, but we all know what was said about our engineer.
Well, I, I don't think Joel has, and so that's why I'm a little nervous, because Joel hasn't.
I, I saw the letter, the six-page letter. I just didn't see the Orenco ones, but I saw the one from John.
Okay, yeah, the Orenco one came just the day before.
I sent that out, I sent that out this morning, and I'll get you on it again.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Um.
So, I have a thought. To me, I don't need to hear a word from Orenco, because that's like trying to decide if I'm gonna buy Fred Meyer tissue or Safeway tissue. I just need to decide where I'm gonna shop, or that I need tissue rather than whatever. Once we make a decision that we're gonna do either step or gravity, if in fact we decide to go with step, then I'm happy to listen to Orenco's presentation. But I'm not gonna buy Orenco and then decide to do step. If that makes sense. It's like, if I decide I want to buy an SUV rather than a sedan, then I'm gonna go talk to all the SUV providers. But if I'm gonna buy a sedan, then I'm gonna talk to the sedan providers. It's, I need to make the decision first of what I'm gonna buy, then I'm gonna talk to the merchants, to the salesmen. So, I have no interest in hearing from Orenco. I don't think Peter needs to talk to Orenco, unless we in fact decide to go with the step system, then we can talk to Orenco. That's my attitude.
Dale made a comment, "The challenges, the details that make that decision," sorry, went away. Can only come from Orenco.
So, nobody else makes a step system?
No one else makes this type, and that's, that's their argument. Their argument is, is that they have a special type. That is, that is a, and, and everybody that I've talked to will say the exact same thing. They'll say, "It's a great product, it's got its uses," you know? So, you're saying not the prelos? Dale, I'm sorry, I'm not.
Nobody else has the prelos.
That's correct. That's a specific system, right? That, that's a.
Right. But. Nobody else sells a Ford Explorer except Ford, because that's the Explorer. But if I'm gonna buy an SUV, I wanna talk to Ford and Chrysler and S and Infiniti, da-da-da-da-da, and then see what they have to provide for the dollar. So, what I'm getting the impression of is no, that we're not, hmm, being made available the opportunity to talk to all the vendors that make all the step system products, because all we're getting is inundated with this one company that wants to shove this thing down my pipe. And I would like to make the decision regardless of who is selling me what, then we, well, this is, again, this is me, and then I wanna talk to Orenco and da-da-da, and da-da-da, and da-da-da. Again, I don't know anything about the manufacturers of different products.
Most, most of us don't, but.
Right. And, and the first to, I'm the very first to admit that my learning curve was like this steep.
But we've relied on people outside. We've listened, just like Tim has mentioned. But we've relied on people outside, we've listened, just like Tim has mentioned, OAWU.
Right, but they don't have a product.
Right, but they're hands on, they work with it.
Yeah, no.
What what I'm concerned about and is. Is Peter, our engineer. Went to a town that we've looked at. You know, because they they did a sewer system and they expanded. And that person that works with it had an opinion. And he shared it with Peter. And then Aranco tried to shut them down. I don't. It's gonna be hard for me, I'll sit in there, I'll be professional. But do I want to meet with them after they wrote the letter? And and what they and Joel, I just sent it to you, so.
Okay, thank you.
You know. Everybody else read it, I'm not really impressed. I you know, I didn't make my decision. Just, oh, hey, yeah, let's do this, you know, I listened to the. Okay, I'll make one statement, in that letter that Aranco wrote, they went after Heath. They made a comment about whomever, but they never went after Arthur. And Arthur is the one that told us that he's writing checks to Lapine to tear up their system to put in a gravity. To me. That's a big deal. I know Lapine, I know what they do with their system with their with their affluent after they treat it. But they're making that that type of a change. I'm going, whoa, okay.
McCray says she has to leave to go to the city council as well as Dale.
Thank you, McCray. So. We just directed. Keller and Associates to look into the gravity. I'm not impressed with Aranco's tactics, I'm just not, and Mr. McCormick. That.
I I'm gonna believe that he's doing everything he knows, this is something he feels that he has some information on. I'm making the assumption that he really believes in the product. To the point where he's worried that we might overspend and then everything else will fall apart. And and I think that's a always a valid concern, that's my worry from the very, very beginning, right? So so I just want to keep that in in that perspective.
Well, I worry that it'll fall apart if we have a system that the. The cost is gonna be so that we have to bill the citizens more than fifty dollars a month. Because that's kind of where we started with, this is what it's gonna be. And you know, I would have a hard time jumping up to sixty or seventy bucks a month myself. I I don't. I don't want to go down that road, but I that that's gonna be up to us to find the funding. To make sure that the the thing is paid for where we don't have to. Present something like that to the communities.
And Tim, all I can say on that is I hope that people then responded to the census. And it wasn't just all the people that have the highest income. Because one point four percent of median household income is where we're gonna be stuck in. I just that's that is the reality, all funding agencies are gonna require it. So that's that's why I'm just hoping. You know.
Well, I know with ours with our water.
I'm not talking about money anymore, I'm talking about one four point four percent of median household income. Because that keeps changing.
But I know with our. With our systems, we are required to charge a certain rate in order to be eligible for grants and even loans. Because they want to look at our rates to make sure that we are able to set aside money for future projects. So I totally understand that and I understand the the percentage, so. Yes, I I agree with you, it's very important that not just the. The high end income winners are able to respond to the census. Or we might have to challenge the census, I don't know what, that's another road to go down that we don't want to have to.
I haven't seen the numbers yet, so I'm just kind of waiting in the wings on that one.
And and another thing, another thing, making decisions and sticking with them. And somebody might come in and. Try to blow it all up. And we get nervous, which I am not, but and want to make changes. There's a a large sum of money coming our way. If we don't make decisions and we look to be wishy washy. That money's gonna go away. We don't want that, we need to stand firm. And just because somebody has a different opinion and wants to threaten us and to do all this and and he's. Gonna get the public against us, I'm not afraid of that, I just want to make sure. That we if if we make a decision, let's go with it. And stick to it. That's all. I have Joel, he wants to look into. The step a little bit more, correct?
Yes.
Tim's okay, no change. Janet?
No change, I mean, we're just looking at it, we're not buying it.
Yeah. Shelley? Unmute, unmute, I know.
I'm totally comfortable with continuing with the step, but to do due diligence and to be a good representative of our of our citizens. If in fact, there is a. If we find that the numbers are not correct, let's put it that way, and that perhaps a step system is less. Costly to the citizen after they're using it in their home, then I'd be willing to talk, but again, my biggest concern. Are twofold, that it will not be less expensive, just like Mayor Kersh is indicating, and my second worry is. Power outages and I don't know anybody with a generator in Detroit.
How how often when we do lose power, how long does it normally take for it to come back on, I I was only in Gates for like a year and a half, so.
Hey Dan, I had a two week power outage last year.
Okay.
Yeah, we've been out in Mill City for up to a week at a time, it's been a while, but we have.
It it has everything to do, and so that's that's the key, I think, on the step systems is that they're backup. So the system that Aranco has, and this is just based on the information they've said, what can. Be used up to about twenty four hours. And that's it, and the backup storage tank, that's about all it holds. So that is that honestly, that's the one thing nobody's argued against. Both John and Aranco acknowledged that.
Okay. Jeff Smith. No, I won't tell his exact words, but no change. Joe Parks want to look into the step.
Ken, as long as it's not inappropriate, we should read Jeff Smith's concerns because he's he's a decision maker too. As long as there's just nothing inappropriate in there.
Oh, gosh, they got me on the spot.
That's the one I sent you?
Yeah, yeah.
Well, it wasn't that bad.
Well, I talked him off the phone.
Oh, okay.
Now you're really putting me on the.
Do you have to edit as you read?
No, I I have to. Gotta find it. He I'll just generally, he's not gonna bow down to a threat. He doesn't, that was most of his words, he's not bowing down to some. Individual that wants to try to stir the pot, it ain't gonna happen, we're the board, we made the decision and I'll leave it at that. That's pretty much what his email was, right Janet?
Yes, I am right now trying to find it myself, but yes.
I don't have.
Okay, so what I'm hearing is you do want us to do a little bit more intervention on the numbers. If they're really far off, we need to do something about that.
If they're far.
Okay, and so then that's my question is you want me to work with Peter or Keller Associates? To make those to really look at those numbers another way, get some additional opinions that can stop. Especially on the O and M side.
Yes.
And then. From there. We you know, we have the next meeting in two weeks. For and it was supposed to be on the. The agenda. On the fifth, thank you. So on the fifth, so then my question is, do you want me to? Bring back, you know, some numbers, do you, what do you want me to do next, do you want me just to put it back on the agenda for discussion? Do we want it to put it next month on for potential approval? At this point, we haven't even seen the official draft, so I think that's inappropriate to approve it if we have don't have the draft. So we'll have to have that obviously.
Can we get the numbers before the meeting?
That's what I'm gonna try to do because he has to finalize his draft, but he can't finalize his draft until he knows what direction to go. You see the problem?
Yeah, 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 we're hitting a brick wall again.
And this is. Yeah, I I if. Look at the numbers and if they're really off. Then we need to do something different, but if they're not that far off.
So what I'll do is.
I don't know how we're gonna know for sure, I mean, there there could always be the question about the numbers because Peter's gonna do his. His work and his calculations based on. What could be. Or Enco is gonna do their numbers on what they want it to be as well, you know, what they what the ideal. Ideal numbers are gonna be, right, and and I don't think either one of them are gonna. Try and and do. Play devil's advocate or or try and talk about the other direction, right, Peter, I think is gonna would give a more balanced. Because I don't see, you know, some of John's accusations of Keller getting twenty five percent of a more expensive project. I think that's a bunch of bullshit myself, I don't, I just don't think that's.
Thank you.
That's right, okay, so I don't know what they're how that's gonna be, but I know that the engineers, yeah, they get paid a lot, but. Look at the detail they have to go through to design the systems and and everything for. I mean, every single house has to be engineered with elevations and all that good stuff or whatever. Way the connections are gonna be, it's an expensive deal. To do the engineering and at every project I've worked on, whether water projects, sewer projects. Everybody complains about the engineering costs because they are huge. But there's a lot at stake, so they have to go through everything with a fine tooth comb. I I've seen a lot of. A lot of projects and I'm always floored with the price of engineering, but. That's just a reality of of a big construction project. And like I say, somebody's always gonna be opposed and want to something else. John McCormick's threatened to to throw a big monkey wrench in the whole deal if we don't go his way, but. I you know, I don't even understand that kind of thinking because like when we have a city council meeting, I. Want everybody to give me their opinion. But when the majority speaks and votes on something, then that's a decision that we all. Have to go by, even if you were a most of that decision, you still have to support it in the end. And that's just part of being on a committee or a good board. Yeah, and so it and John not being on the committee, well, he can be out there. Screaming and shouting and he can say all sorts of things and and. I don't think that's good for the community, I don't think it's good for the project. But it's a reality as well, so people like that want to press their opinion. And force it on other people. We have to be able to like I say, defend our decision. But I I don't think that's gonna be that hard to do.
Yeah, we have all looked at. At the Facebook and all the comments and. All what's taken on taking, you know, place there, so.
If if folks want to take a deeper look at Aranco, if we want to have a subcommittee. Go look at or rent codes, have a presentation from Aranco and bring that back to the board. With what they think is the the qualifying. Argument, I'd be willing to listen to the committee members that want to do that, I absolutely would would listen and be. Open minded to anything they have to say, I try and be that way. But I don't know that I want to have the full board and have a Rinko come and give just their presentation. Because then like Shelley said. Don't we have to invite everybody else to come and give a presentation too at that juncture? I mean, because then we're just, we become biased if we if we only listen to one presentation.
So maybe what I can do to help resolve this. Is to ask Peter to look in and get verified outside sources on the O and M for different types of systems. And just put it back in there whether or not it's a regular system or what. Just get a get a range of O and Ms that we've seen from different places that are more recent.
Not just Aranco, other places.
That's correct.
Yeah, because after to me, what after Aranco did. Yeah, I'm real disappointed.
Yeah, and I I don't care if it's a rank though, I just I just want to hear what they have to say about staff, so it can be any other company, I don't care.
That's what I'll do is I'll ask them to actually verify some of the costs that they're coming up with and ground truthing it with. And I'm using that word that maybe Peter said, but you know, making sure that that's an accurate reflection. The O and M costs that they put together was actually based on Mill Cities O and M. And so the financial person put that together, not necessarily. All through like he was working through those numbers too, so Gordon was working through those. But let's ask for a couple additional verifiable sources. And do you want me just to send that via email to everybody?
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean.
And then and then should I ask him to continue on or hold off on the rest of the master planning until? Until that's done.
How far will that set us back?
I think it's back about a month is what I think, not because of anything else, but because of when our meetings are.
I don't even want to be set back thirty days. I mean.
It's 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 pretty much a shot in the gut every time we get pushed back.
Yeah, it's this getting old. I'm getting old.
So do you want me just to push for that and say include those in your calculations and keep moving forward?
Can we make a decision?
Well, your decision is not until you actually get the draft master plan and you either approved the draft master plan or send it back for revisions. It's just he needs to draft something and right now it's two different. It's two different books if we don't if we.
I myself would love to have numbers and have them do forward on a gravity system and then when it's time to vote, maybe, you know. If everybody, the board. Agrees to make a change, then we make a change.
Okay.
Is that okay, Joel?
Yeah, I I just didn't want to vote on the master plan till we at least saw some numbers on the step side, so.
Yeah, I talked to Peter today and he has talked to two. Construction outfits and and they both. Their concern is about the rock. And Danielle made a comment. When and Shelley's familiar with all this waterline stuff up in Detroit, I've ignored it. And there's areas where there are rock that you might have to go deep. Um, and there's areas where there are rock that you might have to go deep. But most of the area from Clifford, Guy Moore, Hill, Mackey Lane. All them, Meyer, um. They're all hills going down to twenty-two, so the pipe doesn't have to go that deep. Uh, in the city, Shelley's area, her, her resident, and, and, and those areas are pretty much flat. Uh, where the lift stations are, I don't know, I'm just speaking for Detroit, I'm not speaking for.
I think there was three or four streets that, when I was working with Zipley, um, and H B H, that they identified, it was three or four streets that. Are, are, um, very rocky, and so that's why boring was really important to them at the time. So I'm making that assumption in, in, um, Detroit specifically, based on that experience.
So.
Yeah, I think it's, it's first, second, and third. Yeah. Those, those first three streets that border twenty-two over by the bridge, yeah.
And then Lake Crest comes down, then.
Yeah.
That wasn't one of the ones that we're concerned.
It was first, second, and third, yeah.
Right. So, I, I'm sorry, this might be a dumb question, but is there any way that you could do like a gravity system for identity in Detroit? And then do a steps type of system for gates if that turns out to be better for gates?
So, um, I, yes, but I will tell you that is extraordinarily difficult. Because you would have a system in Mill City that would be technically different than a system in Gates. Which would be then technically different than Detroit and idea.
Okay.
Right, because you would have the multiple different technologies, and so you would then have to have. Operators that have multiple different experiences in those technologies.
Okay, alright.
In, in the PowerPoint presentation last night, I think I saw those. There was an option, those options were there, uh, and it showed even the, the dual kind of system for Mill City. Gates as, as well as all steg system for Mill City gates, and, and that, but I think it was all. Gravity system up for Detroit that was in that PowerPoint, uh, yeah.
Though, the one other thing I'll throw out is, you know, we obviously, because of the fires, there's a lot more urgency. Right, than in, in general situations. Um, one of the things that I'm seeing though, uh, just based on, uh, my conversations with Peter, is that. No system that we put in is gonna be any faster, like, there's no difference between the gravity and the step system on. On how quick it can get in the ground, because we still have to go through all the same pieces. And even if you put step systems in, say, in gates to try to help people build that quickly. Those systems are not the same systems that we would need to do for a pressurized sewer system. So even if that was, even if potentially that would be an Orenco-type system, right, the Prelos-type system. That would necessarily work for them in the short term. Does that make sense?
Yeah, alright.
So that's, that's also in the kind of the decision-making, is that that transition is gonna be hard, and. For people that are gonna spend a lot of money to move back now. You know, that money for them is out of pocket, but at least then they're not asking for reimbursement for them. Does that make sense? So like, there are some, there are some additional financial components that, again, on the engineering side, you know, it. You know, he's going through a decision matrix, your decision matrix was not just about that side, right, yours was also about, okay. The, you know, the fact that power goes out quite often, you know, they can put a number on that, but is that number big enough? To calculate that as a risk, because if that, if the power does go out and it's over that twenty-four hours. Then we have, you know, what, eleven, no, uh, what, seven to eight hundred pumps that all of a sudden need to have emergency power. And the cost differential, right, when you have a step system like that, the reason some of the O N M is, is. Reportedly cheaper is because the cost of the energy to use that pump is now on to the resident. Versus the sewer authority. So that's, those are the things that I could, I could read through the Orenco pieces, and that's what I could, you know, figure out that there's a big difference there.
You know, it's just less moving parts is better.
So, so what I'll do is I'll ask for those additional verified information, we'll tell him to keep drafting his recommendation, whichever recommendation he feel. That, you know, that you guys have moved on, um, and then we'll take a look at it, and if it, if it's suitable, then we can approve it in August. If it's not suitable and we have to send it back, then we'll have to just wait.
Yeah.
That's good.
Okay. Thank you very much for your time on this, we appreciate it.
Thank you, everybody, for making it here tonight. On such a short notice.
Okay, have a good night, guys.
Alright, thank you all, bye.
Bye.